Call the February 6th study session to order. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mr. Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz?
Here.
Commissioner Rice? Commissioner Duckham? Commissioner Tompkins? Commissioner Mahoney?
Present.
Commissioner Williams?
Present.
Commissioner Otwell?
Here.
Chairman Shatwell?
Here.
Six present.
Any public comment? This is your first opportunity.
Bournemouth, I wanted to correct an error I made last month. Commissioner Walz does not work for the Grass Lake Public Schools. He works for the Jackson Public Schools. I blame it on Commissioner Rice. He came up to me before the meeting and told me I always do my homework, so of course I get up and I make an error. I'm very pleased that the board voted eight to one to approve the park board and park directors' recommendation, and I hope we get a beautiful and functional building. I want to speak about something on the state level. The Senate just passed three bills, 652, 653, and 654. They would create an independent oversight panel that would have the ability to reject any environmental regulations and to approve any permit that the DEQ decided not to approve. I've had numerous dealings with the Department of Environmental Quality, a number of issues, and they always favor business already at this point. This would completely allow business to control our environmental regulations in the state. And this is extremely dangerous at this point because we have 20% of the world's fresh water surrounding the state, and it is our most valuable resource. It is our most valuable economic resource, and it will be even more valuable in the future, and we are now going to allow this resource to be destroyed. And I think this is just completely terrible public policy. They say we want to compete with China as far as jobs. Well, we're going to compete with China as far as environment too, and you should do a little research about what they've done to their environment and the incredible pollution that they have over there. I mean, that's going to cost them billions in terms of health care. So I just wish that everyone here remember that water is life and that we need to protect it.
Is now closed. We've arrived at the MAC. Just going to give you a brief update. I've got some slides to go through on what's going on at MAC right now. What's going on with MAC for the upcoming year. So do I just click? Okay. Whoops, not there. All right, let's try this again here. Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you. Okay, so the first slide there shows a website we started about a year or so ago that kind of goes into the specifics of county government. What we found is that a lot of folks don't understand what counties do. So this is a very pictorially easy website for folks to go to and understand what's the clerk do, what's the registered Ds do, what's the role of the county commission. We have a lot of folks that use it when they go out and do presentations to schools. We've got some flyers back at our office. If you are going to go do a presentation to a group and would like some flyers, please let us know. We'll be more than happy to send them down. We also use it to educate a lot of legislators who don't understand the importance of county This is one of our services, and so I'll talk about some of the services that we're providing through the association. We do have a workers' comp fund that's administered out of the association. It's got about 80 members. This year, we gave about $3 million in dividends. It's got a great loss prevention program. So if you guys are ever, Mike's, ever looking at some different options for workers' comp, it is available to you guys and any of your other entities within the state or within the county. These are some of the other programs. We've obviously have our CoPro Plus program, which is something we've just started with you guys in the past 30 days. We have a nationwide 457 retirement plan, a life insurance plan. We do have a relationship with Blue Cross Blue Shield, ABILDA, which is a telecommunications plan, and then all-state insurance plan. I won't talk too much about the CoPro Plus. I spent a lot of time on it. The last time I was here, we have started the program here with you guys, so that's up and running. A report I wanted to reference that came out about a year or so ago, it was done by CRC, which is an independent third-party kind of think tank out of Nova area. So it looks at assessing some IT stuff, things like that. Best practices. This is something we are consistently collecting at the Those things you think you're doing well, so we can kind of tout those to folks around In the MAC president, one of the things we got, we've heard feedback from our conferences post documents, things like that. Just another way for you to interact with other county commissioners So getting into some of our legislative priorities that in October that would prohibit counties from charging fees for those who use the court system. For that legislation being signed, there was a task force put together to look at court funding long-term and what is the best way to fund the courts. As you know, courts are very expensive to operate. They cost a lot in your budget, and you don't necessarily get a lot of say in those costs. So that's the idea of the task force. I think they have a two- or three-year timeline on putting something together on that. Investing in Michigan's infrastructure. Obviously, we still deal with a roads issue, even though we did have legislation passed in 2015 to deal with the infrastructure issue. We've got pipe issues, we've got road issues. So we are very concerned with that as well. So it was good to see that the governor did put in $35 million in the infrastructure fund this year, which moves along the lines of that legislation that was passed in 2015. That bumps up to about $150 million of general fund dollars this budget session, so we'll see how that goes. We, of course, want to make sure that we're protecting county revenue sharing dollars as well as we move through the budget process. So here's some of the legislative priorities for the upcoming year that we'll be looking at. Reforming Michigan's system of financing local government. This gets at the bigger picture of local government financing, not just an expense-side equation, which we dealt with a little bit the end of last year with the pension OPEB issue, but also looking at how local governments are financed and making sure that's a little more secure. There was a bill introduced alongside that pension OPEB legislation last session by Representative Verhueen out of Grand Rapids, and that took county revenue sharing dollars and almost put it into a virtual lockbox, so it would make it more difficult for the legislature to raid that money and use it for other things. That bill did not move alongside that package, but it is still sitting out there, so we are hopeful to see some movement on that. There have been some discussions about looking at moving that bill this spring as we move through the budget process. Reforming the tax capture statutes. This gets at the DDAs, TIFAs, downtown development authorities, the tax increment financing authorities, and how some of those older ones out there have been around for a while and continue to capture county tax dollars, yet US county commissioners have no say in the renewal of those. The reporting on them has been pretty poor, so we really don't know what the impact is statewide of the tax dollars they're collecting. There was legislation that is passed out of the Senate and House that gets at putting some teeth to those reporting requirements so that we do have a better idea and some more transparency as far as what they're spending their money on. We think it should go a little further and look at how special millages are being collected. A lot of folks who are voting for special millages, whether it be a senior millage or a police or fire millage, you know, some of those special millages are going to these DDAs as well, and not a lot of folks know that. We'd also like to see some of the resetting of the baselines on some of those, so that counties that have been, you know, if those were created prior to 1994, you know, you're still collecting those dollars that were that old, and a lot of those downtown development authorities are collecting significant tax dollars. So I don't know how far we'll get to see on some of those reforms we would like to see. We were happy to see some of the legislation move that gets at the transparency reporting because we do think that's a good first step. Reforming the Michigan Tax Tribunal. This gets at the dark store issue that came about over the past five or so years. Legislation was passed last session overwhelmingly out of the House. Unfortunately, it ran into a bad committee in the Senate. This year, the same representative, Maturin, from Kalamazoo, former county commissioner there, introduced the same legislation in the House. It still sits in the House at this point. And then Senator Casterson from the Upper Peninsula introduced his version of the bill, which gets at more looking at deed restrictions on these properties and how those deed restrictions are being handled by the assessing process. Alongside of that, you have the Michigan Supreme Court decided not to hear the case that Menards appealed against the city of Escanaba. So basically, what that means is the Court of Appeals decision stands, which said the tribunal has to relook at that case. So now you have both sides, the city of Escanaba and Menards, gearing up for defense in front of the Michigan Tax Tribunal on that. That, of course, was the very, kind of the first case that started this dark stores issue. So it'll be interesting to see how that case is reheard. You could very well see the same result, but the Court of Appeals was very specific in some of the details that they said to the tribunal on how to look at that case. So, and I'm not sure when that case is supposed to be heard, but I'm assuming it's in the next six months or so. And then improving the Child Care Fund. If you remember, last year, there were a couple issues with the Child Care Fund. First, the timing of the reimbursements back to the counties was very late, and second, the department was questioning what, was starting to question what they were going to reimburse counties for. So we were successful in getting the timing issue fixed at this point and also getting legislation introduced and moving right now that gets at making sure that everyone's on the same page as far as these costs and what are indirect costs and technology costs and what is going to be reimbursed, so there's not questioning when budget time comes on what the reimbursements are going to be. So at the end of last year, we dealt with the pension OPEB issue. What the governor ended up signing was basically what the task force said, greater transparency reporting, including uniform financial assumptions. And incidentally, we were in a lot of contact with Mike Overton during this whole process, and he was very helpful and
Lightner.
Oh, no, he was helpful in getting us a lot of information, among some other administrators out there. There's a pension OPEB stress test, so it kind of looks at what your funding levels are, what percentage of your budget is going towards your unfunded liabilities, and kind of could put you into a warning system. If you are put into a warning system, you could, you may be in the red, if you want to call it that, but then you can go to Treasury and say, you know, we're trending in the right direction. We made the changes, and the Treasury will be like, good, you're good to go, just keep doing what you're doing. You do have to make normal costs, and you do have to do the pay as you go. You know, fortunately, we don't see a ton of counties, this being a huge issue for a ton of counties. A lot of counties have made the changes they need to, really on the OPEB side to make sure they're trending in the right direction. We thought it could have gone a little further as far as giving counties a little more authority over some of the contracts and things like that, because as you know, sometimes the counties are under hook for things that maybe an arbitrator would have awarded, and they didn't necessarily take into account all the budget issues that could have been going on with a local unit. But unfortunately, the legislature didn't see it that way, so this is what they passed and the governor signed. So these are the bills on the tribunal reform that I spoke about, 4937 is Maturin's bill and 578 is
Can I go back to the OPEB and ask you a question on that?
Sure.
Pension funds have been, pretty much through that legislation, have asked to audit their auditors?
Yes.
Is MAC looking at that as a bolt decision and a headly violation by an unintended, unfunded mandate being put on counties and pensions funds by the legislature?
We have not looked at that yet, but I'll take it back to my staff and see if they've heard about it from other places. Yeah, I think the intent was, because I sat on that task force, the discussion around auditing the auditors was that some of these pension funds operate very independently of the local units and maybe are not doing their due diligence as far as their auditors go. So maybe one of those things where mass legislation really intended only was there, 529 and 530. They were sponsored by Senator Pete McGregor from Kent County. Intergent Defense Commission, so this is another big issue I'm sure you folks are familiar Back 30 days again, then there's a whole arbiter process and everything like that. Once you do have a plan accepted by the commission, then you really don't do anything Wednesday. We're not going to see a ton of funds there. spring budget, so I don't think we'll see it this year, but we'll obviously keep you informed if we do senior olds out of the adult system and into the juvenile system. now, we just kind of want to see what this looks like. Right now, the 16 percent paid for by the state. So it's kind of a wait-and-see, but we did want to put it on your radar
how it would affect, you know, our juvenile justice system and all that, but there is draft, but the final draft is due April 1st.
Okay. So Next Gen 911, so these bills have been introduced. The local optional surcharge portion was stripped out, so that sense, no surprise there. Right. We do get a decent portion three, provides additional transparency. It does consolidate all the TIFs prior to 1994, but that's the bill if you want to watch that. We do have some folks in some counties that go to floor they all called in because there were a bunch of protesters there, so of course, tell So here are policy committees. That's kind of our legislative stuff. may meet. If you would like to sit on a committee, just let us know. There's your MAC advocacy team. Please follow us, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
One question on the physical presence.
Esclay, we've come to an agreement with potential improvements in our bond about. Even the Sub-1 may say just Jackson? Yeah, they're going to change both of them to be identical. to be identical. Well, that they were going to straighten that area out and... And yards is also going to be...
Yeah. The video link on YouTube has the... Would be a real mess to do the entire project in one season, of course, so. Or the plantings that'll be put, and there are minimal maintenance plantings even... Couple... This needs approval this month on this. They're looking to make final decisions so they can get the project out to bid. If I'm doing the math right in my head here, I'm just holding some current numbers in front of me. So... However, they're relieved of the strings that are attached with audit of the project. About rightsizing for winter operations. Coming back in slowly through the pilot program, which we're all happy to see. It's a win-win. That holds our spot, that last spot available. That's what we're nervous about is...
So, that the board under... Any further questions?
Bit of business with JDOT today is the Ann Arbor Road Trail.
Correct. Small correction within the agreement you see, but it's very minor, and I'll let Angie explain.
It says Sutton Road in there, and it needs to say Hackett. Yeah. Get away permit for this path from the MDOT TSC to turn into... Nations in this agreement and putting it on them. So, next month, we'll bring that that's required to build the project. From you guys to approve for us to be able to move forward to get the MDOT permit.
Trail along Ann Arbor Road.
I'm Steve. Do you? Funding purposes and that type of thing.
Okay. Any further questions? For resolution... Pass unanimously of those present.
Thank you, Commissioners. Just want to let you know that...
Do you have other items? New Commissioners here.
Place, and I want to say that I think that the new director and his staff... And constituents are about something to do with our roads.
Public comments now closed. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Light...
Saturday. You can get them at the box office, at the fairgrounds or etixt... ...to share, and we also have Beer Fest tickets on sale, because Beer Fest is coming up, March 10th. E-ticket in Beer Fest again is March 10th from noon to 5:00.
Seeing none, we are adjourned.